Okay, we're just gonna get started. Welcome to the Provo City Planning Commission meeting on Wednesday, August 24th. We'll begin our meeting with a prayer by Commissioner Ross Flum, followed by a pledge. It will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Ed Jones.
Our dear Father and Heaven, we're grateful to be gathered here as members of the Planning Commission and members of and residents of Provo City. Heavenly Father, at this time, we ask that our discussions and deliberations may be in the best interest of Provo City. We also ask a blessing on our firefighters, police officers, and other first responders, as well as those members of our military who protect and defend our freedoms both here and abroad, and say these things humbly in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to make a note that Items 1 and 2 have both been continued to a future meeting yet to be determined, so you'll just hear Item 3 tonight. Before we proceed with Item 3, I want to mention a couple of things. Items noted on the agenda with a star require a public hearing and legislative action by the municipal council, so the council hearing, so on the item tonight, will just be a recommendation that's forwarded. Let's take some time to just see if anyone has any conflicts of interest, so starting my left to right, if you'll say your name and state whether or not you have any conflicts of interest.
Brian Smith, no conflicts.
Kermit McKenney, no conflicts.
Jamin Rowan, no conflicts.
Ross Flum, no conflicts.
Maria Wynden, no conflicts.
Edward Jones, no conflicts.
Great. So, Item Number 3 will be introduced to us by Mr. Austin Corey. Nathan Chapel's request for approval of a zoning map amendment of 2.4, 4 acres, generally located at 1290 North Geneva Road from A15 to R110, zone in order to subdivide property into seven building lots.
All right, thank you. What you have here, this is an aerial of the general area, so just to familiarize you of where this is located, you've got the I-15 freeway, obviously, that's running along the east side. The blue portion that you see to the west, that is the eastern boundary of the Lakeview Elementary School, and the property is right on Geneva Road. So, this is the general plan map. As you can see, it's everywhere in this area is a yellow color which designates residential, but we'll talk a little bit more about the specifics of that as we go. The zone map shows the current zoning that's there. You've got to the east of this subject property, east and south are R110 developments. There's that pocket of ag that it's in right now, and to the north of that is an R18 development by, technically, by the zoning designations. So, you have the history and things of this property in your staff report. I won't go into much detail on that unless you have any specific questions with that, but the intent of this zone request is in order to create a subdivision of seven lots. On this plan, you can see Lot Number 2 and Lot Number 7 actually have existing homes that have been built there. They were built originally under the Chapel Circle subdivision, which is right here. So, you can see Lot 1 and Lot 2, that was the original subdivision created that those building permits were issued under. And there's a view just from Geneva Road looking, so you can get an idea of how those are placed. So, the proposed subdivision that you see before you right now, actually, Lot 1 and Lot 7 don't meet the requirements of an R110 zone as the applicant is requesting, but the, in order to, for that to proceed in any way, they would have to resolve that regardless. So, tonight, you're not discussing whether or not the subdivision actually meets the zoning, you're discussing whether the zoning is appropriate for the site. Recent decisions from the municipal council on similar R1 developments here on the west side has indicated that they're uncomfortable with further development or further granting of zoning until a more general, or a better master plan is put together. We are in the process. The planning department is doing a number of neighborhood plans, as you're aware, you've seen a few of them come through so far. They're hoping to see neighborhood plans on the west side be developed before they feel comfortable with granting zoning. So, on that premise, staff is recommending that this proposal be denied, obvious, for obvious reasons, that we don't have that master plan yet. The best that we do, as far as any kind of policies that exist right now, is the general plan. So, that residential designation that I mentioned to you earlier is, the only real policy direction in there is that it's obviously intended for residential development, and that that development should be capped at four units per acre or less. Just to make you aware, that would roughly translate at face value to an R110 development or less dense. So, R110s, R120s, RAs, those all are residential zones that would meet the technicalities of the general plan language with that density restriction on there as well. So, those are the zones that fall under that, but again, with the most recent direction that we've seen and the desire for a neighborhood plan, the recommendation for denial is what you have before you.
Thanks. Are there any questions for Mr. Corey? Yeah.
This is, this is not the first time this has come to the commission or the council. This plot's come before, and the issue at that time was, on the north side of Lot 1 and 2, there was kind of a fence line that, there was some property that needed to be gained for an access or a right-of-way or an easement with a northern neighbor there or something to that effect. And at that time, it was, it was turned down or denied so that that could be worked out. But it seems now that there's, now there's different issues at play. I guess this is more of a comment than a question really for staff, but going back to the council wanting to wait on things being built out on the west side until there's a master plan for each neighborhood where some development could potentially be, it seems like that is too broad of a brush, and that this is, I mean, if you were trying to put a Walmart right here, sure, that's different. This is housing, infill, going in where housing is surrounding on all sides except for the west. So, I think that that's, that's, I would, I would say, denying it just based on the council wanting to wait until there's a neighborhood plan, I don't agree with, and I think we would move forward. But there are other issues that Austin has talked about as far as lot sizes. Cutting one lot down to a R18 and the rest of them, 110, doesn't really work, but it's, that's almost what you'd have to do unless the applicant changed the whole thing to something different. So, just my comments on that.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Any other questions for staff? Okay. If the applicant's here, if Nathan Chapel is here and wants to come forward, invite him to do so. If you'll state your name, address, and the microphone, that'd be appreciated.
Hey, my name is Nathan Chapel, and my address is 1386 Grand Avenue in Provo. And, uh, two homes existing here.
Excuse me for a second. Can you try getting closer to my mic to make, to see if I can get it on?
I say there were homes existing here. That was not one that we built. We did do a remodel on it. The other one was torn down and hauled off. And we've been trying to get this through now for eight years, nine years, and I think the issue before was the lots, I mean, the minimum size for a development was three acres. And we got a text amendment doing away with that, so now we've implied with that. We have plenty of room on all of the properties, as far as you can see, we got 10,000 to what, 14,000 square foot lots. It's not like I'm getting into small lots. I was assuming that there was going to be another text amendment changing the setbacks, but that got set back last week, so I don't know when that's going to occur. So, therefore, at this point, I'd like to proceed as an R18, try to get this thing developed and keep the few neighbors happy without changing lot size. Keep everything 10,000 to 14,000 square feet. See what happens with the other text amendment. And I think that's the only issue, those two. You gotta have 100 on an R110. I've got 90, but I've got that 14,000 feet on everything else. And we're boarding R18 there, R110 here. He's got something, if we could put a there, there that shows you got R18 all over the place here. And I'm not trying to do it to get smaller lot sizes, I'm just trying to do it to move forward and get the place done and cleaned up, because we have no water to raise out south, obviously, so we can't proceed with an R110. If we can with an R18, if the lot size won't change, I'd be very happy with that. Go watch your dot up there.
Are there, are there any questions for Mr. Chapel? And, and Mr. Chapel, can I invite you? I know it's hard because the microphone's much lower than your stature, but I'm having a really hard time hearing you. If you could speak more directly in the microphone as we ask questions of you. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so you heard me bring up the area to the north of Lots 1 and 2 that we discussed probably three years ago when it came, has that been worked out? Is there anything going on there, or has that been worked out with that neighbor?
I'm not sure what the issue there is. I know that at one time, we were trying to develop Manny's as well as the other piece of property, and there is a border, I mean, the fence line, it's not the real borderline, but it's all been surveyed, so I'm not sure if there's any issue there or not.
I think the issue was the property line, your property line to the north went through an easement or kind of a drive through a driveway that that neighbor to the north used to get to access that, if I, if I recall.
No, it didn't.
No? Okay. Forget my question then. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Chapel?
One more comment. I think I saw in the thing that Austin was pointing out, the state has approved the egress and everything there, so that was approved, signed off by Barry Sawzack of UDOT.
Any other questions for Mr. Chapel? Okay, thank you very much. We'll invite you to come back up after public comment, if you so choose, and address any, any issues or concerns that were raised. Okay, if there's, the neighborhood chair here, invite the chair to come forward for this neighborhood. Are there any other neighborhood chairs?
Beth Algood is the neighborhood chair. She sent in an email to you.
Right.
She apologized for not being able to make it today.
Okay. Okay, maybe I'll read, I was gonna read all of these emails at the, kind of during public, at the end of public comment, but maybe I'll just read Beth's really quickly. So, Beth Algood, the neighborhood chair, wrote this, as Mr. Corey said, can't be here tonight. "This property has a very rocky history with a lot of misinformation given to the neighborhood. We ask that nothing move forward on this property until all the discrepancies and issues are resolved to the satisfaction of the city and the neighborhood. I'd write more, but I think that will be enough until it comes before the council." Thanks, Beth. Okay. Any other chairs, neighborhood chairs here? Okay, we invite the public to come forward. If you do choose to speak, if you'll state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes or under.
What's that?
You're gonna cut me off at three?
Yes.
Can I show some slides?
Sure. If you'll pause while we get the slides out.
And while he's doing that, I actually live in Lot 2, that's up there on the lot plan. You'll see a better picture than what Austin had there, it looks like.
My name is John Meredith, by the way, and I live at 1381 North Geneva Road. So, there's the existing home, that's the home that I live in. So, you hadn't, couldn't see it, but you'll see that they're not little dumpy houses that he's planning to build. It's, this is about 3,600 square feet, very nice homes. Next slide. And this is what I have to look at outside of my window for the last three years. So, this is the east side, next. That's the side lot that borders on Geneva Road, next. There's my view out the front window, next. And this is the view behind me, which I find kind of interesting that nice homes won't be approved, but this gets approved in my backyard with my neighbor. So, next one. So, I did a little bit of research like Austin did and found the zoning. So, you'll see the purple is all R18, blue is R110, and up there in the kind of orange is the R120. And you'll see to the left, and the kind of brown is where Ivory Homes has been approved for, I don't know how many thousands of houses that they say are R18, but I can't believe that those would actually be R18 lots. So, I have to sit in a lot for the past three years, looking at garbage and trash, that, waiting for a master plan, waiting for who knows what, while Ivory Homes gets approved for thousands of homes that are tract homes, whereas I'm in a semi-custom home, which will be the same, and it doesn't move forward. I mean, I know that the neighborhood chair said there's issues. What are the issues? The issues are that, I don't know what the issues are. There's no, other than the zoning issue, which is the setback, you have people that are upset and people that don't even live next to the property. And so, I have no idea why they think it's their job to go and, rather I live in a garbage dump, actually approve houses. And whereas they get approved, I guess it's because, you know, it's just that they don't want Mr. Chapel to profit, and I've heard people say that. So, it seems really kind of arbitrary and capricious to approve large developers when small developers don't get approved. And to wait for a master plan, I would agree with Mr. Smith, is, what's the point in that? Why wait for a master plan? How's that going to affect what happens here? So, I guess I'm about...
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Meredith. If there is anyone else from the public that would like to come forward and, again, state your name and address?
My name's Darren Weeks, and we own the property 1328 North Geneva Road, just north of Lot 1 and Lot 2. And we understand that the zoning has been changed to where Nathan don't need three acres anymore, and at one time, it was supposed to have been three acres to prevent little lots here and there. And I don't know if it's legitimate or not from what I heard, but I understood that there was a change to where he didn't need three acres anymore, but no, there has not been any conversation between Nathan and I about easement or anything in the past three years. We do get to look at the same stuff that Mr. Meredith gets to look at, and the weeds and whatnot that's there and taken care of, but the point is, there's the property, our property, and the property just north of us, that's gonna be basically landlocked because the state doesn't want more accesses off of Geneva Road. And so, that kind of prevents the property just north of us and our property from really doing anything, because there's a road going into Nathan's property, and there will be a road going into the re-subdivision, and so, it basically landlocks the two properties that's in between the rese estates and what Nathan wants to do there, and still, there's nothing been discussed with us as the landowners to the north. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments from the public? Anyone else like to come forward?
I'm Kimberly Weeks, live at 1328 North, in the north property. From your comment that you made, I feel like there is not the right information, or possibly what the problems were between Mr. Chapel and us. We have tried to work it out, and I guess at this point, it's zoned so he can, and I guess at this point, like we said, we have to look at that. I don't, and what Mr. Meredith said, yes, it is a mess, but I feel like that, that is Mr. Chapel's fault. It didn't need to be kept that way. We've been dealing with this for eight, nine years, and just feel like, I guess what I'm trying to say, I just want it to be done right. I want it to be, we have dealt with things, and there has been misunderstandings, there have been non-truths about us throughout the city council and the zoning over the years, and our neighbors thinking things, and I guess what I want, I want it to be done right. I want what happens to be done with the state. I, I want the building, it to be, there to be the right kind of road to go in for the fire department to come in if needed. I guess I feel like that, that's, I feel like that there has been things said and done that have, have been half-truths. So, I guess that's my point. I want something done with it. Our issues are past. I mean, we're gonna have to look at somebody's backyard, that's just how it is. There wasn't anything to get worked out with us and Mr. Chapel, and now the zoning's changed, so he doesn't need our property. All I want is, I guess, the city council and you guys to make sure that it is done correctly. I want it to be the way that it's zoned correctly, and the laws and everything to be done the right way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Weeks. Any additional comments from the public? If not, I think I'll take just a minute, since we don't have a large turnout, just to...
Mr. Chair, may I look at the neighborhood chairs?
Yeah. So, this is an email from Mike Elms. "Nate Chapel, let me know that Provo is discussing the possibility of changing zoning in my house and the surrounding land from agriculture to R8. I'd like to let you know that I support this 100%. Over the years, there have been some bad feelings in the neighborhood about developing this land. I can tell you, being one of the two houses that actually reside on the property in question, we really want this land to be developed. When I purchased my home in 2010, I did so under the impression that this was going to be done. For years, I didn't even have a curb and gutter in the front of my home, causing huge amounts of mud to pile up in front of my house. During the winter, the mud would freeze over, and I would be forced to cross over 10 feet of ice before entering Geneva Road. I would even see children walking on Geneva Road with a 45 mile per hour speed limit on their way to school, because there was no sidewalk and the area was full of mud. Yet somehow, arguments were made that this property should not be improved. I don't really know the full backstory of the issues that have taken place over the years. I do know that really, all we want is the same privilege that everyone around us already has, improve land. They did complete the improvements in the front when he completed the Meredith's home. We are now very excited for the road to be finished and have a curb and gutter along the side of our home as well. Please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions." That was from Mike Elms. An email from John Meredith, but he spoke to us today. And then, one last one from the Alphens. "My husband, Don Alphen, and I support the request of Nathan Chapel for the zoning change of his property. A small development of homes similar to the one already built would be lovely and a huge improvement over what's on the property now. We are aware of the issues raised by other property owners and feel that it's time to let go of old complaints and allow Nate and the neighborhood to move on." Again, that's from Jerry and Don Alphen at 1167 North Geneva Road. Okay, unless there's anyone else that's decided to come forward, we'll now close public comment and allow Mr. Meredith, if he so chooses, to, I'm sorry, Mr. Chapel, if he so chooses to come back and, and address any of the issues. If not, we'll proceed to discussion among the Planning Commission.
The comment about the landlocking is not accurate, because I met with the state, and there's already two accesses, and they will allow a third one in there presently.
We're still having a really hard time hearing you. I'm not sure if it's like the, the decibel of...
Probably my, my voice.
There we go.
Anyway, I met with Mr. Barry Sawzack with the state, and we had a master plan showing how you could access the property to the north. There's already two accesses on there coming off from Geneva Road, and so, there would be no landlocking occurring. What should have happened was way back when they're developing rese estates and the rest of them, they should have been planned out then to come in from the other way, but, but that didn't happen, so. But there has, I couldn't, I can show you that there is approval by the state for another access for developing a property to the north. I don't know if there's any more questions or not.
Is there any more questions for Mr. Chapel? Okay, we'll return the conversation now to the Planning Commission. Any observations or questions or points of discussion? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, this, this is me, but the whole thing seems a little fuzzy to me, and maybe Austin can help out. But where exactly are they not compliant with current code? I read in Findings of Fact Number 3, that the property's currently, on page 3, uh, page 5, sorry, Findings of Fact Number 3, the property's currently illegally subdivided into five parcels. So, is that something that would have to be resolved before they could come back and... Anyway, I met with Mr. Barry Sawcak with the state, and we had a master plan showing how you could access the property to the north. There's already two accesses on there coming off from Geneva Road, and so there would be no landlocking occurring. What should have happened was way back when they were developing rese estates and the rest of them, they should have been planned out then to come in from the other way, but, but that didn't happen, so. But there has, I couldn't, I can show you that there is approval by the state for another access for developing a property to the north. I don't know if there's any more questions or not.
Is there any more questions for Mr. Chapel? Okay. We'll return the conversation now to the Planning Commission. Any observations or questions or points of discussion?
Yeah, this, this is me, but the whole thing seems a little fuzzy to me, and maybe Austin can help out. But where exactly are they not compliant with current code? I read in Findings of Fact Number Three that the property is currently, on page three, ah, page five, sorry, Findings of Fact Number Three, the property is currently illegally subdivided into five parcels. So is that something that would have to be resolved before they could come back and, and ask for this kind of, what they're asking for now and get it approved? And also, number five, subdivision doesn't meet applicable zoning ordinances. Seems like those two things are sticking points in the Finding of Fact anyway. But I'm just having a hard time seeing exactly what it is that is keeping this from going forward. So if you could spell it out for me, I know it's just me, sorry.
No, it's me too.
Then I would appreciate that.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Let's talk about number five first that you mentioned, because that's probably a little easier one. Lot One and Lot Seven, the request that's before you for the language is R110, which requires 100 feet of width and depth to the lots. Lot Number One and Lot Number Seven are both 90 feet in those measurements. So they don't meet it for those requirements. They meet the size requirements and, and many other things, but those still fall short.
So let's stay on that one for just a second, if we can. So a resolution, and I'm not, I know we're not here to work out resolutions, but to say what the, what has to be done. But if, if one and two were combined and seven and six were combined and everything else was the same, now we're, now five's okay?
Well, there's still one more issue, and that is the UDOT access. Mr. Chapel has noted that he, or he has stated that he has UDOT access, but as far as staff is concerned, we, we have not seen a formal letter of approval yet. So it may be possible that he's got that, but we haven't seen it, so we have no way of verifying that.
So those two things overcome, we march forward. What about number three? The property currently illegally subdivided into five parcels?
Right. So this subdivision plat would correct that. Basically, what it is, is illegal subdivisions, basically render property unable to obtain a building permit. So he has to, he has to correct that issue and creating a new, or creating a legal subdivision that meets the zoning that's on the ground would correct that. Yes. But again, tonight is actually not about you approving or denying the subdivision.
Right.
It is about the zoning that takes place on the property.
Right. Okay. And, and to that point, to me, the zoning fits the zoning around it. It could be R18, but it looks like it fits R110 better. If you look at the whole zoning map, it really is just the additional northwest corner of what already exists as R110. So for me, I have no problem approving zoning for this as R110. That's an easy thing to me. Then when you go in to approve the subdivision, or however that happens, that, then you bring up other things that, that have specifically to do with the, you know, 3.5 and the UDOT access. Correct me if I'm wrong. Zoning fits to me.
You're all looking at me like I should answer a question.
So, so was your staff recommendation to, for us, for denial based on a zone change? That is, that is you disagree with the R110? Or did you guys disagree with the proposal of the sub-development or the, of the development within that area? That is, it seems to me that your decision to deny is based more on the actual subdivision rather than the R110 zone. Does that make sense?
Your question makes sense, yes. The, the recommendation for denial is based upon the council, the recent council direction of desiring a neighborhood master plan in that area before further...
So can I interrupt you then? So if this, if this was, if there was nothing wrong with the lots, you know, if it was a five-lot subdivision rather than seven, all the frontages were met and they were 100 foot, 100 feet rather than 90 and 95, and everything else was in place, you still would recommend denial only because the city council hasn't, and the city haven't made a clear determination of how they want to see the west side developed?
Correct.
So in other words, we're just gonna say no more develop, no more infill development until we have a better master plan, period?
That's, that's what we're hearing.
No matter how good or how poor or how mediocre a development may be?
Right.
Jamin.
Got it.
Just, just to follow up that same conversation, is it conceivable that as far as a neighborhood plan or another master plan for that area would require this particular portion of property to be R115 or higher? Or is it more likely that it would come back as, in an R110? Or lower?
Or R18, as the applicant suggested he was willing to look at.
Well, that's a hard question to answer because we're not in a planning process for it. We haven't really studied much beyond that. The only thing that we have as far as current policy direction is what's in the general plan, which the only, the only thing that really comes down in the general plan is that density restriction of four units to the acre. But as I, as I stated, the municipal council has recently made it clear that they're looking for that plan, that policy direction, to be more refined before we really proceed with much more rezoning. Does that help clarify, or does it just add more confusion?
No, I, I understand.
Can you go back to the picture that shows this, but showed more area, the aerial shot?
Maybe with the zoning?
Oh, the zonings. Sure.
That's what I wanted to see.
Mm-hmm. See that? It's right there. There's R18.
I have a hard time just narrowing it down to this one property and, and saying that it's incompatible with the other properties around it and, and saying no to rezone at this point in time until there's a, a area plan. I think that, I mean, I'm not, whether it's five lots, six lots, seven lots, however many lots, but I think just the zone makes sense. The zone change makes sense with what is around it.
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Oh, if you, if you, I was ready to make a motion, unless you, if you'd like to hold your comment for, after the motion, or go first?
Yeah, I'd like to make, just one more point of clarification from, from you, Austin. So let's say you approved that for an R10 zone change, and, and the city, let's just say, you know, pigs fly, and the city council approved it. You still, the developer would still have to come back with a development plan, a development plan for this, correct? And that that development plan would then need to meet all the other restrictions, including the setback, or the, the lot widths, excuse me, for the 100 feet, correct? Depending on what, if it was changed to an R110 zone?
Correct. Yes.
And that would probably necessitate perhaps, yeah, all the lots were over 10,000 feet, but the frontages were off on two of the lots.
Widths on the two lots.
Yeah.
Well, width on one and depth on another, actually, just by...
Five feet.
Technicalities of definition.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Before, before you make a motion, Mr. Smith, can I just ask one more quick question? Do you see any advantage or disadvantage of the applicant mentioned being willing to, to propose an R18 instead of an R110? Is that, is that distinction anything to be concerned about at this point? If we are to say, you know, we're just gonna put on hold the municipal council's concerns about development on the west side, we don't feel that it really applies to this particular piece of property, that, that, that that decision was made in light of kind of larger developments? Is there a distinction between R110 and R18 that's worth discussing further?
10,000.
Without, without an approvable plan, yes. So R18, just in a numbers game, doesn't meet the four units to the acre density restriction stated in the, in the general plan.
Right.
It comes out to about 4.3.
So R110 is, is what we'd want to stick with rather than...
Yeah, so R110 or less dense, so your 10s, 15s, 20s, and R8.
The, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones.
Just as a clarification, apparently, the city council is saying, we're not gonna approve anything on the west side until we have a master plan, which seems like, wow, that's a, that's a broad statement. Everything stops on the west side? Is this, is this really what the council has said? And the second question is, what other neighborhoods or areas are restricted by this? Is this gonna stop all development in Provo?
If they don't have a neighborhood plan.
Can I just say something to that really quick? I don't think that they've, anybody on the council has specifically said, and you correct me if I'm wrong, we are halting all building until we get neighborhood plans or a master plan for the west side. I just heard in our combined meeting with the commission and the council, they did say, we would like to have working neighborhood plans and a west side master plan before we do anything, like you said, on a large scale. But in, in this case, this is really almost, if you take away all of the plans that we've seen and just look at the parcel with the zoning, there's nothing else that this could be. It just fits. And I guarantee, I would almost put money down, that in, whether it's in one year or 15 years, that is going to be R110, like everything around it. It's just a matter of, of when it happens. So having it tied to the actual plan that has come to us, that almost kind of throws, you know, chaff on us, and we start looking at things that really don't need to be looked at in this, in this case. I mean, they should. And with all respect to the council, I know what, exactly what they're trying to do, and I, and I think it's a great thing. It's a necessary thing. But where this is almost technically infill, it, it just matches everything that's around it. And I don't see any reason to hold the zoning back until, and then when, when the actual development comes back, now it's gotta jump through the right hoops and make sure it meets everything to go forward.
I, I agree, Brian. I, I think R110 is appropriate for that area. Do I think this particular plan that Mr. Chapel has proposed is ideal for that? No, I think the, the development part of it needs some work.
Right.
Yeah. But I, one possibility is you could say to the council, change it to an R110, and then they can, you know, do, do that, that they, what they will. But ultimately, for the neighbors, we're gonna, this doesn't give him a license to go build until everything else is resolved and approved. But, but yeah, it will be R110.
I'd like to make a motion if I could, and then we can continue discussion.
Okay, sure.
I would move to approve the request for the zoning map amendment of 2.44 acres generally located at 1290 North Geneva Road from A15 agricultural zone to R110, single-family residential zone, in order to subdivide the property into seven lots in the Lakeview North neighborhood. And with that motion, I would like to add my utter respect for the council's plans and what they were trying to do in getting neighborhood and west side master plans in place, and think that that's an absolutely necessary thing for larger parcels that, where things like this don't fit. So that's my motion.
Okay, is there any discussion on the most, on the motion?
So do we know, though, that it will actually be seven building lots? If he doesn't have the exact frontage and square feet and everything, should we...
I would also, I would like to strike the seven building lots from my motion and just say, change the zone to R110, period.
Okay.
Just a minor technicality, it needs to be stated that we recommend that the city council approves, that we can't approve it.
Done.
I'll second.
Thanks.
So what's been, the motion is, Brian, that, that you made and Ms. Wynden that you seconded, was for approval for R110 zone change, but not for, to subdivide that property into seven lots?
No, that's stricken, so just to zone, to change it to R110, period.
And I know the motion's been made and seconded.
And, and one other thing to correct on that motion, you're making a recommendation. You're not approving or denying.
Right, Mr. Jones stated that, and I accepted. Perfect. Thank you.
Can I make one more comment on the motion? I don't know if we need to, in order to make this motion, do we need to feel more confident about the approvals from UDOT for road access being obtained for the...
No.
I think that could come later with the development, potentially.
Okay.
And I think the other thing, it may help propel the city council and city to really work to figure out the plan for the west side.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mrs. Wynden. All those in favor of this motion, please make their favor indicated, please indicate their favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that motion? Any not in favor? Okay. We have unanimously recommended that the municipal, that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council. That's the end of the items that we've heard. I'll look for a motion to dismiss this meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anybody else?
Yeah.